Hello, everyone. Good afternoon or good morning and welcome to the webcast. My name is Christine Dersie Davis. I'm the Executive Director of the Ohio Chapter of the American Planning Association, and I am Chair of APA's New Urbanism Division. And I am your webcast moderator. Today is Friday, March 22nd, and we will be hearing the presentation, "The Next Evolution of Public Hearings." For technical help during today's webcast, you can type your questions in the chat box found in the webcast toolbar, or you can call that 1-800 number that's shown on your screen in bold. For your content questions related to the presentation, you can type those, again, in that questions box located in the webinar toolbar, and we will answer those at the end of the presentation during the Q and A. I ask that if your question is for a particular panelist, that you state that in your question. Coming up on your screen is a list of our sponsoring chapters and divisions for 2019, with more to come. They're still trickling in. So thanks to all of those for participating and for making these webcasts possible and free to their members. In particular, today's webcast is sponsored by the Colorado Chapter of the American Planning Association, so thanks to them for sponsoring today. You can learn more about all of the chapters and divisions that APA has to offer by visiting planning.org. Coming up next on your screen is a list of our upcoming webcasts, and you can register for these by visiting our webcast webpage, ohioplanning.org/planingwebcast. This webcast has been approved for 1.5 CM credits for live viewing only. We do have some recorded distance education sessions available. We have 1.5 law and 1.5 ethics, and you can learn more about those on our webcast webpage, And to log today's credits, you just need to head over to planning.org, log into your myAPA account, and then you can search for CM activities either by today's title or event number, both of which can be found on our webcast webpage. Like us on Facebook, Planning Webcast Series, to receive up-to-date information on our sessions. And finally, we are recording today's webcast. It will be available on our YouTube channel. Just head over there to YouTube and search Planning Webcast, and we'll pop up along with almost 300 of our previous webcasts for you to view. We'll also have a PDF of the presentation available at the conclusion of today's session on our webcast webpage. All right, with that, I am going to turn it over to today's presenters. Travis Parker, you're going to be leading us off, so I'm going to change the controls over to you. Don't forget to unmute yourself. Thank you.
All right, it took me a minute to unmute myself. Welcome, everybody. I'm Travis Parker, and I'm the Planning Director for Lakewood, Colorado. And I'm excited to be here today to chat with you about our experiences in taking our public hearings online. I'm joined today, virtually anyway, by Jason Spurling from People Speak. He and his team are the co-creators, along with Lakewood, of the service that we're going to chat about today, and you'll hear more from him in a little bit. We were going to be joined by Paul Rice, who worked with me in Lakewood as the Development Assistance Manager and who is primarily responsible for the implementation of our new system and the process changes that were involved. He had an unavoidable conflict this morning and won't be joining us, but I'll be doing his portion of the presentation. Our agenda's pretty straightforward this morning. I'm going to start with some background of the how and why Lakewood took this issue on and how we got it started. Jason's going to jump in then and talk about the service and the website itself, how it works, what it can do, and how it was built. I'll then talk about Paul's portion, the staff experience, how staff interact with this site, process changes, and how we adapted to the use of online hearings. I'll go into some analytics and results of the program, how it's working, and the successes we've seen. And then we'll wrap up with some considerations and further thoughts for moving forward. And we should have plenty of time at the end for Q and A. So for many years, leaders in Lakewood have been thinking about public engagement in general, how to get more people involved, and specifically about our public hearings, how to engage more people in the decision-making process itself. And I'm going to go out on a limb and imagine that some of the trends that we were seeing in Lakewood match the trends that a lot of you on the call are seeing in your own community. For example, low participation in public hearings, right? In the course of any given year, the number of people that actually show up and interact with their decision-makers at a public hearing is, you know, a fraction of 1% of the total population of the community. And, you know, we're seeing numbers just steadily dropping over time, not only in Lakewood, but across the country in terms of public hearing attendance. And then the people that do come, the people that regularly attend the meetings or attend more than once in their career, their lifetime, tend to be less than representative demographically, right? They tend to be on the older end of our citizens. They tend to not represent our community in terms of culture, in terms of race, in terms of economic class. And so we find that we are missing out on huge segments of our population in terms of collecting input and engaging people in our decision-making process. And finally, when we do have big cases, when we do have meetings that attract larger groups and larger parts of the population, it tends to be the people with extreme views, right? It tends to be the people that are really riled up about a development in their neighborhood or that are, you know, huge advocates for some new policy or regulation that the council is considering. And this prevalence of extreme viewpoints in the room has the negative impact of really drowning out, in the best case, or covering up, in the worst case, views that are more moderate and more qualitative and more constructive. So in Lakewood, we spent a lot of time thinking about the causes of this and the solutions of this, and it led us down the path of thinking, you know, why hasn't technology entered this realm in the same way it has in the rest of our lives? I mean, consider some examples of how fundamentally our lives have changed in every other aspect, right? For example, male. In 2001, we saw the high-water mark for the first-class postage. There were over 100 million first-class letters sent in 2001, but the writing was already on the wall in terms of the future of that as a mode of personal communication, and at this point, it's virtually obsolete in favor of email communication. The 100,000 letters a year that were sent in 2001, we see that many emails sent every three to four days in 2019. And consider every other aspect of our lives, be it transportation with ride-sharing and car-sharing, be it accommodation with Airbnb, VBRo, be it service provision, retail shopping, grocery shopping. All of these aspects of our lives have been fundamentally changed by technology to the point where we can live our lives with our phones and our personal communication devices. And, you know, one final example, you know, what we're here doing today, you know, sharing information. Throughout much of human history, if you wanted to learn information from an expert, you were limited by, you know, your proximity to that person or that event and the capacity of the venue, right? And today, Jason and I are in two separate cities, communicating with literally hundreds of people, each in their own cities. And, you know, further, the presentation will be available on demand in the future. So we've fundamentally changed how we do business and how we can access information, but we haven't yet made that shift in terms of our public hearings. And this is a picture from 150 years ago, and we can still recognize the process that these people are going through because it's the same process we go today. A group of decision-makers sits behind a table or a desk or a dais, right? And they listen to public comment, and they deliberate, and they make decisions. And if we think about changes from this over the past 150 years, it's really quite limited. We've moved the meetings indoors, you know, we've added comfortable chairs. At best, we've added some fancy audiovisual equipment, so we can have microphones and listen better. But the fundamental premise, that people need to attend in person on a weeknight and sit and listen to each other's comments and make their own orally, hasn't changed in 150 years. And so when we look at today's public hearing, fundamentally, they're still the same that they have been for over 100 years. And so in Lakewood, our discussion became, how can we adopt this technology to bring the meeting to the people where they are? To bring the public hearing to people instead of trying to drag people to a public hearing? And to be quite honest, in 2016, when we started going down this path, we had no idea that we were innovating. We assumed that we were behind the curve and that there were other cities out there doing this. Imagine our surprise when we did a nationwide, actually an international, search and found that it didn't exist. The most technologically advanced cities in the world, the most they were doing was live-streaming their hearings. So one-way communication, people could watch from their couch, but, you know, they couldn't see it ahead of time, they couldn't participate on their own time, they couldn't interact. Cities were taking email comments, so listening to email comments in certain cases, and then graciously printing them and putting them in a staff report for the councils to read. But, you know, no one had taken the step of replicating the public hearing in an online format. And so, once we wrapped our heads around the fact that this didn't exist, that it wasn't out there, our next step was to look at whether it could be built and whether we could do it and create our own vision of an online hearing. And that started with, you know, talking with our IT department and talking with web developers, and we came to realize how massive a task this was. Our IT department is, I'm sure, like a lot of yours, it didn't have the capacity in terms of staff time, staff resources, or money to be able to take on a project of this magnitude. And when we started getting quotes for private developers to build it, the quotes were astronomical. So in the end, the only way that we could proceed in creating this system was to go out and find a partner. And we formed a public-private partnership with People Speak to build out our online hearing system. And the advantage to the city is we didn't have to front the upfront costs, and we got a custom-designed system that was built around our ideas, our design, our needs. The advantage to the private industry was, you know, having the benefit of our design of being a, you know, creating a first-in-the-market sort of system for government use and having us as beta testers over the course of a year or two and use this new technology in real-world situations to work out the bugs and actually to test the effectiveness of it. And at this point in the story, I'm going to turn it over to Jason to talk about the system that we actually designed together.
Ooh, maybe you're there? Hello, Jason?
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
All right, thanks for letting me know. I was halfway through the whole presentation.
Phew, I was about ready to chat you, so good.
Well, thank you. I'm very excited to be here and chat with all of you today and show you what we've built and is now available and live at lakewoodspeaks.org. I remember vividly when Travis and I first started chatting a couple of years ago about this, and I remember getting a text message from some friends. It was about a development that was happening at a lake near my house where I live, and there was a number of people on the text message, and the conversation was about this project. And there was a few lines of description about what was happening there. And the ask from my friend was that we all band together and go downtown and go to the public hearing and provide some input because we cared about the lake and what was happening there. And I'm a busy father. I've got two little kids, a wife, a full-time job, and taking the time out to go down there was hard to make a priority. And as Travis mentioned earlier, there's a lot of folks in that same sort of boat. And so I didn't go down eventually. And what we've done is try to solve that problem. And we think of it in two ways. One, there's a place problem in that I have to get to the public hearing. And then the second is a time problem. I have to be there at a specific time, which makes it harder for people to participate. So let's dig into this a little bit. Next slide, please. So we started out with three different goals. The first goal was to increase the engagement in the town and in the city where this would be running. And not just engagement in terms of the frequency of participation, but also, as we've been talking about, the demographics. So the parents who are really busy and are experiencing time poverty, or the younger folks who have just entered the workforce and are trying to hustle to make it, or the even younger folks who want to participate but maybe, you know, can't even drive to get down there. And also, of course, allowing for the older generation to still participate, but reach those who maybe can't because they can't get there. The second goal was to really look to expand our, Travis, you want to go to the next bullet there? To expand the awareness in the community. And this is, you know, I experienced it with this SMS message being sent to me, but it's hard to keep track of what's happening. And so our goal was to create a centralized repository for all of the information in a very streamlined way. So versus going to a city website that has a lot of information, very robust amount of content that can be difficult to navigate, we wanted to create a very streamlined, single presence for all the projects that might be of interest to me as a citizen in a way that is easy to find. And then the last is really the promise of technology that, in my 15-plus years working in digital, has been solved over and over, that technology brings us more cost savings and more time savings than maybe analog solution. So let's take a look at how this actually played out. Next slide. So what you're looking at here is some screenshots of what you can see currently at lakewoodspeaks.org. And I'm going to point out a couple of things to you. First, you can see the value proposition to the citizen of if they can't get down to a public hearing, that they can participate through this website. At the top, you've got a simple "Learn How It Works," where we describe this new process to citizens. And then the login button, which we'll go into deeper detail later, but it's for either staff who wants to administrate the content or for a decision-maker such as a planning commissioner. Going down the page, you see these two screenshots of different lists of cases, and these are organized by body, so either city council or planning commission. And they're also grouped by the month, and we list the ones that are coming up next first. And then we also group them by cases that are being heard on a specific night at a specific public hearing. And of course, when you click into these, then you can get to a detailed page, which we'll look at now. This is the case page for one of the planning cases. Hopefully, you can see it. Okay, but the basic idea here was that we wanted to try to take the model of the in-person public hearing and present that in a digital environment in a way that the citizen would have a very similar experience in terms of the content that they're getting, the information that they were able to consume, as well as the ability for them to participate through asking questions, providing public input. So some of the things you see here is, very top left, we've got the title of the case. We've got a summary that tries to demystify and decode some of the language that you might see in a typical staff report or other materials to make it more citizen-friendly. We've got a link to the public hearing, as well as the time and date of the public hearing. And when you click on that "View" button, you will be brought to a page on the primary site for the city of Lakewood where you can learn about the location and other information relating to visiting in person. And then the other materials that are on the site, the presentations, the maps, the attachments, are all the same information that was being communicated and shared to people in the in-person public hearing, but now is available online. And we'll go through each of these in a little bit more detail, but just to call out some of the high-level functionality, you've got a button to ask a question to staff, you've got a button to ask a question to an applicant, if there is one, you've got a button to leave a comment, and you can see the different buttons and content throughout the page that you can consume. So let's go to the next slide. Now, if you remember back to the development at the lake story, what I would have loved to have done at that time, instead of getting just a text from my friends, was the ability to click on a link that could have also been shared by phone to phone, and then to actually be able to learn about what was happening at the lake from my mobile phone while I'm sitting on the couch after a long day at work, or on my tablet, or maybe I have time during the day and I could consume it through a desktop or laptop. And so one of the major goals for us was to be able to allow the presentation of the materials to display properly and easily to be consumed on any type of device. And so the site's responsive, it adjusts and organizes itself to be effective, independent of what actual device that you're on. Next slide. One of the challenges that we faced was the experience that I'd get as a citizen when I walk into a public hearing, is that I get to see a presentation from the staff, and if there's an applicant, also a presentation by them. And typically, the materials there can be similar to the other materials, but they might also introduce new materials. And certainly, the information is conveyed in a way that's easier to consume, especially if you're less intimate with the information. So we wanted to recreate that in some way in the digital environment. And the challenge is that there wasn't any piece of content. Unlike a lot of the other materials that were already PDFs or already maps or already other different attachments that could just simply be added to a webpage, this content didn't exist in its entirety yet. And so what we did is we worked with staff to find out how we might be able to do this. And they were already creating presentations for many of the cases, and these were the presentations that they would then show at the public hearing. So it was really simply a matter of choosing to either do some sort of live recording of them presenting it, or do some sort of other, like, voiceover type thing. And we opted for the latter because it required a lot less skill and a lot less toolset than doing a live recording. And we were fortunate to discover that there's some software out there, Microsoft PowerPoint, that allows you to record your voiceover on a slide-by-slide basis. And this is important because it really lowered the barrier to entry and reduced the cost that you might incur if you had to do a single voiceover recording all in one shot, which maybe if you make a mistake in the middle, and then you go back, and you are not able to just edit one piece of the content. So by using Microsoft PowerPoint, they could simply record the voiceover for one slide at a time and resulted with very, very little post-production costs at all. And now these are put up on the webpage so that when I'm on my phone, I hear about the development at the lake, I tap the link, I go there, and I can watch a short presentation to get quickly informed about the issue. Next slide, please. So before we started working with City Lakewood, they had a staff report that looked like what you see on the left, and now it's a little bit more what you see on the right. So it used to be that there would be an agenda page that'd be printed, and then all the pages for each case would be printed, and then those would be stacked, and maybe it's a stack of 80 pages. And then those 80 pages are duplicated, and if they had, let's say, 11 planning commissioners, they'd be duplicated 11 times, and then assembled and hand-delivered to each of the planning commissioners to review. Now that we have all the content online, we're able to automate much of that process and add some extra benefits to it. So the first thing we did is, for each public hearing, we generate an agenda page online that looks a little bit like what you see on the right, depending on what cases are being heard. And the decision-maker will get an email notification the day before the public hearing that they can click, log in, and then come to this screen where they're able to see the different cases that are going to be heard. Now, in order for them to review the information, they have a couple of choices. One is to simply click the "Review All" button, which is the bottom-right button there. And when they do that, they go to each individual case page one at a time in a linear fashion, the same as if they were reviewing an 80-page stack of paper. Alternately, they can also click on the buttons just to dive into a single case if, for example, they're coming back to review something again or just have to pay attention to one of the cases for some reason. The other things you see here are four columns with some numbers in there. Those are unread comments and comments from the citizens, and we track when decision-makers come to the site and when they review the comments. And if they've not reviewed all of them, then we remind them and we let them know. Likewise, with the staff responses, we do the same thing, which we'll talk about what a staff response is here in a second. But basically, we're trying to bubble up information that's relevant to make their jobs easier. And then about six hours before the public hearing, on the day of the public hearing, we do a quick check to see which decision-makers have not reviewed all the comments, and then we let those folks know that they need to come back and review the materials to complete the review before the public hearing. So let's go this, yep, great. So we've also built a message system. There's both an external component and an internal component. So the external message system is for citizens when they ask questions either to staff or to applicants. So the process works like this. I, as a citizen, I'm on my phone, I hear about the lake development, I learn about the case, and then I have a question or two. And on the page, I'm able to ask a question. That question gets sent as an email to the staff, who then responds. And the response and the initial question and any of the conversation that follows is all threaded through the system, which allows us to bubble that information up and expose it within the admin tool that the staff can log into, and they are able to see those conversations. The benefit of that is it helps mitigate situations such as if a staff member's out per day, or if they're sick, or they have some sort of conflict where they can't attend to the communication, it allows other staff to review and take action on it. Similarly, with an applicant, when an applicant responds to a citizen question, the message is also threaded through the system and available to be seen by the staff. But we also copy and send a same version of the email to the staff so that they're able to moderate without having to go into the admin and just make sure that everything that is being said is aligned with their thinking, and if they need to take action on it, they can. Let's go to the next slide. So the internal messaging system is for when a planning commissioner has a question. So at this point, they're logged in, and they have done a review of the case, and then they have a question for staff or for an applicant. When they post their message, it is a little bit different. And the problem that we're trying to solve for is the scenario of, at a physical in-person public hearing, if a planning commissioner asks staff a question, all the other planning commissioners are there in the room, and they all hear not only the question, but also the response. And so we wanted to facilitate a similar interaction and make sure that information was disseminated and evenly fairly able to be consumed by everyone. So when a staff responds, they respond in a way that the information is displayed to planning commissioners and decision-makers, but not to citizens. So it's a private channel and is a way for us to make sure everyone has the same information, and it's a very level playing field. Next slide. Lastly, going back to the story of me and the development at the lake, what would have been ideal is after I'd seen the presentation, read all the information, asked a question or two, then if I could have participated remotely and submitted some public input in the way of an online comment. And so we have that feature as well. And we've added some tools to improve the value of the comments. Specifically, staff can add decision-making criteria that you see on the left here, and that is guide... that is guidelines that the citizen can review before they leave their comment that helps them understand what the planning commissioners will be basing their decision upon. And this helps get the comments and the public participation more targeted and relevant. Once a comment and is published, it becomes part of the public record. Next slide. The other challenge we were trying to overcome was the experience when I'm at a public hearing in person, and I share my public input, and I look across the room, and I see the planning commissioners, and they're looking back at me, I can tell they've heard me, they're nodding, they acknowledge that they've heard my input, maybe also verbally. And that's harder to do online because it's asynchronous communication, so we don't always know, as someone who's submitted a comment, if someone has actually looked at it. And this is really important. So what we have done has tracked the decision-makers when they come to review each case, and then we publish a count of that so that people can see how many of the decision-makers have actually viewed their comments. And because we remind the decision-makers, both the day before the public hearing and the day of, we see really high success rates here. Next slide. Recently, we've added the ability to present streaming and recorded public hearing videos on the site. This is for the city council. And the way this works is that during the actual public hearing, the live version, the live streaming public hearing can be seen. And then after the conclusion, they replace it with a recorded video. And what we've done with the recorded videos is there's a cue point in the video for the specific time at which the case that is... this video is being put on is actually starting, so that when you go to the case page a day later, it doesn't start at the beginning of the public hearing recorded video, but starts at the correct time. And this is an effort to try to further consolidate and aggregate all the information to each case into a single, easy-to-find, easy-to-navigate place. Next slide. Then lastly, we've added an ability for the staff, after a case has been heard and a decision has been made, to update the status on the page. So this is sort of at the conclusion, the day after I've left my comment. I'm really curious what has happened with the development at the lake. I go back on, and I can quickly see what's happened with the case I'm interested in. Now, we're going to chat with you a little bit about the staff experience, and I'm going to shift this back over to Travis.
Very good. Thanks, Jason. So when I'm chatting with folks about this site, and they, you know, they hear the functionality, you know, say, "That's great, this makes a lot of sense, this would work well in my community," but the first question I get is, "What are the staff impacts? We can't hire more people to manage this process, we don't have any extra capacity in our staff." And my response is, neither do we. In Lakewood, we didn't have the ability to hire additional people, we didn't have any excess capacity in our staff time. So this site was designed around our existing processes and designed not to add workload, although there are changes in the process, and that's what I want to talk about now. So I'm going to start chronologically at the beginning. The first time that most people interact or hear about this site is when they get a notice from the city about an upcoming public hearing. And for our city council, these notices go out 10 days before the hearing, and you've got the traditional, you know, date and time of the public hearing in the first paragraph. What we've added to these notices are an invitation to alternatively participate online. We've put the URL up there twice, and for people that still use this ancient technology, we've added a QR code up in the corner so that, you know, people can use their phone and scan the QR code and go directly to the website if they'd like. Now, the issue is, when these notices go out with this URL 10 days before the hearing, obviously, if people are immediately going on the website, we need to have the website ready with all the case information at that point, 10 days prior to the hearing. That's where the process changes come in, as far as we're concerned, is we've had to make our deadlines for information much earlier. Prior to this system, staff would be finishing up their staff report and creating their presentation the day or two before a public hearing, and applicants the same way. And now, all of our staff information, all of our applicant information is due about two weeks prior to the hearing. Not additional work, except for, as Jason talked about, the adding audio to the presentation. But with that exception, the workload is the same, we've just moved the deadlines up. In terms of adding audio to the presentation, you know, we've converted an office here in Lakewood to, you know, a sort of makeshift sound studio where staff come in and they can use a shared computer, a shared microphone, and add their audio to their presentations. We also make this available to our applicants. The bigger companies, the more sophisticated applicants make their own presentations still, but we do have, you know, individuals or, you know, less technologically savvy applicants that will come in and use our facilities to add audio to their presentation. The one side benefit that we hadn't considered that is very worthwhile in terms of moving our deadlines back has been that, you know, prior to doing so with late deadlines, something could go wrong. An applicant could not turn in their materials, something could go wrong with getting staff materials, and then we'd have a situation where we had a notice meeting or a notice case that we'd have to postpone or cancel. That problem has been eliminated because now we don't schedule a meeting and don't send out the notices until all of the materials are in hand and approved. One new skill that doesn't add a lot of time because it replaces other things is comment moderation. The site is designed to be as... have a low... as low a barrier to entry as possible for commenters. There's no login for the public, they can come on, they can view stuff, they can leave comments. The one acknowledgement that we've made that we're working in, you know, the environment of the Wild West of the internet, is comment moderation. When... and Jason talked about this a bit, when they submit a comment, the public gets an email saying that their comment is being moderated and will appear after it's been moderated. We have a comment policy for things like profanity and for personal attacks and that sort of thing. The comment go... the comment is emailed directly to the case planner, who has a link, so if they're on... whether they're on the desktop or their phone, they can click the link to approve the comment. If they need to reject the comment, they can click that link and, from a pull-down menu, choose the reason why they've rejected. That reason gets sent an email to the citizen, who says, "Your comment was rejected for X, Y, Z reason, please resubmit." I'm happy to say, we've never had to reject a comment for a substantive reason in the history of this. The only comments that we've rejected were accidental resubmissions of the same comment, where we just rejected the duplicate comment. So it really hasn't been an issue. In terms of timing, you know, the minute or two a day that the staff puts into approving comment is more than offset by the fact that we're on the phone and on email a lot less responding to inquiries that would have come in without all the information that's online. And then, you know, finally, there is the creation of the case pages. So this is a fairly streamlined and intuitive process, so much so that I can do it, which is surprising. But it's simply a matter of, you know, creating a case is simply a matter of choosing a public hearing date and time, putting in a title and a summary, and then uploading all of your case information that you, as a case planner, already have: the presentation, the staff report, the maps, et cetera. So it really is a five- or 10-minute process. And then there is some occasional work on Paul or the Secretary of the Planning Commission's part in sort of quality control, just making sure the whole site looks good. But overall, the amount of time that we, as planners, are spending on any given case hasn't changed at all with the implementation of this program, and our process changes have simply been ones of timeline and having some earlier deadlines. So I now want to get into talking about the results of this project. So obviously, you know, creating this from scratch and, you know, trying out something new, we wanted to collect a lot of data and have constant feedback on how and whether it was meeting its goals, and whether we were sort of achieving the mission that we had set out when we created this program. So over the last year and a half, almost two years that the site's been up and running, we have collected massive amounts of data, both of the site's performance as well as things that are happening in person, in our online hearings. And I want to go through some of that with you now. First, in terms of, you know, public input and public participation. This graph on the screen gives us a snapshot of the last eight cases that have gone through the site and the source of the comments that the council or the planning commission have reviewed. And as you can see, this pattern holds true over the past couple of years. Only one of these cases had more comments in person than online. Our average case gets one to two times as many online comments as it gets in-person comments, with the result that between the two systems, we're seeing two to three times as many overall comments on items as we would with just the in-person hearings. So a significant increase in the actual number... actual amount of input that's coming in. In addition, you know, if you attend a regular public hearing, not everybody speaks. A lot of people just come to listen and hear what's happening and inform themselves. That's true online as well. For example, at our most recent city council meeting, we had a fairly big crowd, a lot of people... there were 45 people in attendance at the hearing that were participating in the hearing. Online for that same meeting, 363 people participated by accessing one of the various case... one or more of the various case pages and interacting with the materials, be they the presentation and the staff report, et cetera. And that pattern also holds through the life of this system, where we've seen that every case has between five and 10 times the participation online as we see in person. And one final stat I'll share with you in terms of public participation. I mentioned at the very beginning that if you look over the course of a year, there's a fraction of 1% of our citizenry that, you know, actively participates in a public hearing. Over the last year and a half on this site, the number of unique visitors that have gone to case pages and interacted with the materials is greater than 10% of the population of Lakewood. So we have increased from less than 1% to 10% of our entire citizenry, the number of people that are engaging with their decision-makers. And we consider that to be an incredible success and something that we can't imagine having recreated, no matter what the outreach, with an in-person solution. This next graph shows the validity of designing this system for multiple devices. Only about 60% of the people that interact with Lakewood speaks do so on desktop, so over 40% are using their phones or tablets. And so this is another consideration, as your city is looking to engage its residents in its public hearings, making sure to allow for a system that accommodates both types of devices. This is my favorite slide in the entire presentation, and so we have tracked the demographics of the online and the in-person participation in meetings. This middle pie chart shows the actual Lakewood population for citizens 25 and over. Divided into 10-year cohorts, the five cohorts are almost identical. They're all within 2% or 3% of each other in terms of size. So we have a very well-distributed age population in Lakewood. The second pie chart is the participation in person at public hearings over a six-month period. And what you can see here, and I imagine that if you track this data in your community, it's going to look similar, 80% of our in-person participation is 55 and older. People in the 25 to 45-year-old range are virtually unrepresented in our public hearings. Now, in that same time period, our online participation looks like this: much more demographically representative, the 25, 35, and 45-age cohorts are all at or greater in their representation online than they are in the actual community. And this is the data that our decision-makers, our city council and our planning commission find the most compelling: the fact that they are shown that they're reaching to new segments and hearing from new voices that aren't willing or able to participate in the in-person public hearing. And one final graphic that I find really interesting, this graph shows the time of day that people participate. Keep in mind that every case on this website is up for a period of at least 10 days, and people can choose any day of the week, any time of day in that 10-day period to participate. And this is when they actually leave comments on the site. And you'll notice big spikes in the late morning, around 11; in the late afternoon, around 4; in the late evening, around 9, in participation. The most interesting piece of information on this data, though, is when people don't participate. In the six-month period that's represented in this chart, of all the hundreds of comments that came in, not one comment came in between the hours of 6:00 PM and 8:00 PM, not a single comment. And I'll let you guess when we hold our public hearings. We hold our public hearings at 7:00 PM. And so the takeaway from this slide is that we are conducting our public meetings at literally the last time that people would choose to participate if they had a choice of time. Finally, the most gratifying sort of result and response has been the feedback from our council members and our planning commissioners. We are getting lots of positive feedback across the spectrum from our elected officials and our appointed officials. They appreciate the ability and the fact that we're reaching new segments of the population. They appreciate the increase in the... both the amount and the quantity and the quality of the input that they're receiving on cases. They appreciate the ability to be able to read a lot of the comments that are coming in at their leisure in the day and days before the hearing. I mean, if 15 comments come in on a single case, they can knock that out in 10 minutes over their lunch hour versus those save 15 comments given orally at a meeting, they're going to take an hour, not just of that person's time but of everybody in the room's time. And so expanding the input without expanding the meetings themselves is a big hit with the decision-makers as well. At the first meeting... at the first city council meeting where this service was in use, the mayor mentioned Lakewood speaks no fewer than, I think, eight times, from calling out and acknowledging individual comments to encouraging citizens to use it for future cases and future meetings. Okay, two more slides that I want to spend a few minutes on before we get into Q and A about, you know, major questions that I hear and considerations for cities that are looking to make this shift in the future. And the first is around legal questions. After the staff resources question, the next most common question that I talk with people about are, "Aren't there legal concerns with this? Aren't there reasons why we legally can't do this?" And our legal team in Lakewood spent a lot of time with us and with this system, both while it was being developed and later while it was being used. And the answers are pretty conclusive and definitive: no, there are not significant legal challenges. And the questions come in really two forms, about open-meetings law and about ex parte communication. Every state in the Union has its own open-meetings laws, but without exception, these laws are created to prevent communities from limiting the participation of the citizens in these meetings, of having, you know, secret meetings, of preventing people from attending or doing anything that might keep people from participating. If, for example, we were eliminating in-person hearings and replacing them with online hearings, we may very well have some open-meetings issues. This system is not that. We still have our in-person hearings, the system is additive to that. We are increasing the time and ability and methods of participation, and I'm very doubtful that there's an open-meeting law in the country that would preclude communities from adding additional methods of participation. In terms of ex parte... In terms of ex parte communication, this is the concern that decision-makers will get additional individual information or get information outside of the public hearing process. It's a nuance, but keep in mind, this system is not outside of the public hearing process. It's part of the public hearing process. We now, in Lakewood, literally have increased our public hearing from a few hours on a weeknight to 10 days. So, we have a 10-day public hearing, including both online and in-person segments. So, everything that happens on the website is part of the public record. Their staff report is on the website. The comments that they're receiving are on the website. And all of the decision-makers have access to the same information in the same way. Even, Jason talked earlier about the ability of decision-makers to ask questions of staff. When citizens ask questions, we respond directly and privately and have a conversation with them about their question. When council members or planning commissions ask a question, it's not handled that way. We don't respond directly and individually. We post a response to the entire group, to the entire council. So, we get an individual question from a council, the answer is posted to the entire council. And so, there's no bit of information that's unique to a single council member. They all share the same information. And there's no opportunity for them to converse one-on-one or to chat individually on the site, or to post individually in any way, really. So, my final slide is considerations for adopting this. At this point, you know, you see that this is something that can have a lot of value in communities, certainly has had a lot of value in Lakewood. And I think that the fact that Lakewood has initiated it and started down this path, we're already seeing a lot of other interest in other communities. I think this is going to quickly spread. So, there are some things you need to consider as your community decides when and how to put more of its public hearing information and participation online. The first, which I talked at the beginning, about building this on your own or buying it as a service. Based on our experience, I don't think there's any way that communities are going to have the capacity or the money to build this individually. My prediction is that the future of this service is as a subscription service from companies like People Speak and other companies that are getting into this public hearing business. But that's a conversation that, you know, each city will have to have internally. My last slide covered these legal issues. I'm, you know, I'm absolutely convinced, and our legal team is absolutely convinced, there are no legal issues with this. But it is something that you and your legal team and your community will have to familiarize yourself with because you will get the questions, whether it's from your elected officials or whether it's from others on the outside. People will ask about the open meetings laws and the ex parte, and you'll need to be prepared with those answers. Internal process and timeline is a major consideration. I talked about, you know, we had to bump up our deadlines and to make the, you know, the operation of the site work with the notice when people are going to be looking for information. You know, there are a lot of different rules and different policies and different procedures in different cities. I was talking with a city that's looking at this in Texas, and they have some rules about limiting the time between the acceptance of an application and the holding the public hearing, which really prevent them from having the staff report and the presentation done in a timely manner and not before the notifications do. So, they're looking at it from a perspective of their notifications may have to be reworded to say, "This will be up on our website on such and such a date." So, things like that are considerations that you'll have to work through in your community as you're looking at this process. Staff and decision-maker training is surprisingly a non-issue. The backend, the creation of the webpages, is simple and easy and intuitive enough that we internally haven't ever really needed much time or training. The bigger issue is really decision-maker training. And even that's not so much training as reminding. All, decision-makers need to log on to have their views recorded and their information, you know, their activity tracked, rather than just going on the public site and reading it there. And so, the first few meetings, you know, we spent reminding our counselors, you know, "Log on," helping them log on, and making sure that they were going through the right procedure so that we ended up with full counts, you know, 11 of 11 council members have read this comment because you don't want to get through the meeting and have the public see that, "Oh, only eight of these council members are reading the comment." This fifth bullet, how public info is shared, this is something that we didn't anticipate but really got our attention called to it once we were doing things online. When we started putting cases online and titling them the way that they'd always been titled, we had these long and nonsensical titles of cases, things like, you know, vacating 300 feet of right-of-way, 600 feet west of the third meridian of whatever. And, you know, long titles that meant absolutely nothing to anyone but the case planner and the applicant. And, you know, to be quite honest, this is not a problem just because it's online. This is stuff that we should have fixed on our old paper agendas. But, you know, it called our attention to the fact that we needed to present information in a way that the public could comprehend. And so, we had to change the way we titled cases and the way that we, you know, summarized information. And then finally, in terms of marketing and outreach, the way that most people hear about and access the site is through those notices that I talked about for individual cases. They get a notice for a case in their neighborhood that points them to the site. But Lakewood went a little further than that, and we did a little public outreach to, you know, tell people about the site. We did an article in the newspaper. We printed postcard-sized handouts for public meetings and for encounters. And we did an online campaign just to let people know that this service now existed in their community. And that concludes our prepared remarks, and I'm happy to turn it over for questions.
Great, thank you. And there are a lot of questions, and we're probably not going to get through them all. So, folks, if your question isn't answered, feel free to reach out directly to our panelists. The way I'm going to approach these questions is I'm going to start with the ones where I'm receiving the most of the same type of question, and then I'll just kind of work my way down from there. So, the first question is, "This online platform, how much does it cost? Is it, I assume it's an ongoing cost? What were the initial setups? And then, ongoing costs, please."
Well, I can speak to Lakewood, but Jason's the, you know, the business owner, so I'll let him talk to what they'll charge other people. But because we, you know, spent a year and a half in a public-private partnership with People Speak, we didn't front any upfront costs. They built this on spec in order to be able to create a subscription service. At this point, Lakewood's a large community of 150,000. We pay for our, for our city council, we pay 2,000 a month, and we pay a similar amount for our planning commission to be able to use the site.
Jason, do you have any further comments?
Yes, I do. So, you, a little bit more information on that on our website, but we basically have pricing that's tiered based on the population as well as the number of bodies. So, if you're using it just for planning commission or you want to use it for multi-bodies, then we change the pricing. The service is offered with no, like, annual contracts or anything, it's just month-to-month basis, so, pretty, like, a pretty standard SaaS pricing model.
Okay, thank you. So, the next question that I'm getting a lot of is kind of a sort of two-parter but related. Can you talk about ADA compliance and the ability to either read and/or post in a language other than English?
Sure. So, we haven't done a lot of work on the ADA compliance, although we're following modern practices. So, there's going to be some of that inherent, and we haven't actually looked to see what else needs to be done. So, you know, along the spectrum, because we're following best practices for web design, it should be, a lot of it should already be met. The translating to other languages is a great idea. We would love to chat with whoever might be interested in exploring that. It's definitely something that we would be interested in looking at doing. At the moment, it just supports English, but our team has experienced building things with support for multiple languages, so it'd be very welcome to explore.
Okay, thank you. How, you know, as this is, as what one person asking this question said, it's sort of like another social media platform where frankly, people can be bullies and they can be mean. And, you know, they're sort of those quote-unquote "online trolls" or keyboard warriors. So, is it easy? So, I guess this question would, let's start with Travis. Is, you know, is it easy for those decision-makers to separate the good, the bad, and the ugly and to kind of balance and really know what comments are of value?
You know, I've actually been surprised at the quality of comments. We spent a lot of time internally and with Jason's team in trying to figure out how much trouble we get from bots or trolls or, you know, how much profanity we have to deal with and that sort of thing, or just how many non-relevant comments would be up. And to date, it hasn't been an issue, none of that has been an issue once. Like I said, we've never had to deny a comment for any substantive reason. And in terms of the, just the quality of the comments for the decision-maker's use, it's been surprisingly high, as high or higher than in-person comments.
Yeah, and just to add to that, there's, that is something that I'm sure will come down the road as we see more and more use of this type of tool because it is very prevalent. And there's a lot of toolsets for managing and mitigating that type of thing, which we would start to employ as we start to see it sooner. The two steps right now that are being employed is the comment policy as well as the decision-making criteria, criteria for each of the cases. But there's, you know, there's things like sentiment analysis that we can use to start improve the integrity of the comments or even help to showcase or highlight ones that we believe, based on some analytical review of the content, are more relevant and not so on trolling, for example.
One thing, one thing I don't think we mentioned earlier, one function of the website is when people submit a comment, they submit their physical address as well as their email address because we ask for that in person as well at the hearings. And we have the ability, so when, on the public side of the site, if you're looking at the public side of the site, you see a comment and a name, and that's all you see. But we also have the address of each people, and our decision-makers have asked for that address to be on their side. So, when the city council looks at a comment, they see the comment and the name and the address. And so, they know geographically where the comments are coming from. And I think we, I'll defer to Jason, but I think we even have the ability to map those at some point. So, if decision-makers want to see sort of a spread of where comments are coming, that can be useful information as well.
That's another common question that I'm seeing is, is there a way to flag for folks who are commenting outside of the jurisdiction? So, if I live in a different city, can I comment? Will those comments be heard or are they flagged in some way? Or do you even bother flagging them? Is it just, any public comment is a public comment?
Yeah, so in Lakewood, we don't distinguish at the in-person hearing, right? We ask people to give their address, and they can give us a Denver address or a New Jersey address for that matter. And, you know, the decision-makers weigh them how they're going to weigh them. So, we treat it the same way online. We request the information, the decision-makers get the information of the address, and they can discount it or weigh it however they want.
Yeah, and just to add to that, I mean, it's a balance, right? Like, we could add things where you have to submit your driver's license or some form of identity verification before you can leave a comment. And we could restrict things by geographic area. We could make sure there's a match with a residential ownership or, you know, there's a lot of measures we could take. But we try to balance it with the interests of making it as easy as walking into a building to leave your comment. So, but that was modeled based off the, how Lakewood presently allows people to comment from anywhere. But if there's a city that has stricter rules or wants to pursue a different approach, that's a very easy thing to configure. So, I think it should be approached more as a, figure out what the policy is first because there's a lot of tools for mitigating that type of thing online.
There are several questions regarding the recording of these comments. How are these online comments put into record?
So, yeah, go ahead, Travis.
No, no, I was just going to say, I mean, so they live forever online, and we have had some discussions about archiving those sites. I don't know, Jason, maybe I'll let you talk about the discussions that you've had with our staff.
Sure. So, the, I think the, I don't know exactly what the, where the planning commission is presently, but the city council, I believe, is archiving them by just exporting the text of the comments. And they're starting to explore the functionality of their record systems because, you know, we can, like, send the data over there if that's something they want to do to eliminate the manual step. As it is, the comments are online. We've got, you know, daily backups. We've got, like, a lot of security around that so that they're, each city is designed to have its own database. There's no pollution across cities and whatnot. But that's sort of a thing that we would want to configure also on a per-city basis to meet the needs of their record-keeping because the content that we would send to a record system varies. I know for a city council, they don't, for example, want, like, the video in there. But it's very up to discussion per city.
Getting a lot of questions or perhaps a little bit of confusion on how it works when folks are commenting online during the public hearing. Is there time set aside to go over those comments in the middle of the hearing? How does that work?
Yeah, I guess that's something we could have made a lot more clear. The commenting online shuts down prior to the public hearing. And actually, our two bodies do it differently. Our planning commission ends online public commenting the night before the, so 24 hours before the public hearing, to give them time to read the, so they basically have a full day to read the comments. The city council has allowed their comments to be open until noon the day of the hearing. So, they've put it on themselves to get on, you know, and read comments as they're coming in so they're not overwhelmed in that afternoon. The comments are accepted up until that. And so, that's an adjustable and settable feature, but it's not accepting comments up to and during the meeting.
And let's say that a commissioner is reading some questions or some comments, and they have a question, they want more clarification from someone who posted. Are they able to reach out to them or somehow ask them to clarify?
No, I mean, that is the sort of thing that we've avoided because it might get into the ex parte communication issue. The decision-makers only have the ability to ask questions of staff. So, if they have a question, they can direct one to us, and then we can research the information and post an answer that's available to all of the commissioners.
Okay, thank you. Next question, does, are you able to use Google Analytics for this to get information on who's logging in and how many hits? Or is that something that is internally built into the system?
So, there's two analytics. There's, Google Analytics is on there, and there's also some analytics for, like, the count of things, such as the count of comments or the count of staff responses, to have something that's not captured in Google Analytics at the moment.
I'm just going through all these questions because we're just, we keep getting more and more. Does this process, this online process, is it creating any extra, like, pre-work for the like, pre-work for the commissioners, other than, you know, kind of just reviewing what comes in? Is there any other work that has been created because of this? Maybe Travis, I don't know if you know that your sound is off.
Sorry about that, I'll start over. Yeah, there, there are really two changes in terms of the, the commissioners themselves and how they do business. Prior, their staff reports were paper and were delivered. Now their staff reports are entirely on the site. So they're logging on the site to get their information and to read all the case information. And then the only new responsibility for them is just to read the comments as they come in, or, or wait until the day of the hearing and read them at that point. There's no other responsibilities on their part.
Okay, thanks. Next one. We all know these people. You know, just like in public hearings where you have a, a time limit, and, and some people will go to the, to the very last second, and maybe then some. There are those that like to write dissertations. Is there a character limit to the online comments?
There is. So we have a three-minute time limit at our public hearings. When we set this up, I, I did some tests to see how much reading I could get done in three minutes. And we set our, our count based on that, so we allow, I think, 1,000 words.
But, but just to add to that, this is a little bit of the, the Wild West, and so we are trying to approach this slightly experimental. And so while there is the character limit that is timed out to a certain number of minutes, there are not constraints presently for someone to leave two comments, which we could do. And there's also the ability for people to upload attachments. So you could conceivably upload a PDF with, you know, it could be 100 pages long. So part of it is to see, like, are there, are there different considerations for getting information asynchronously? Of course, if it becomes a point where there's so many comments that it's physically impossible to review them prior to the public hearing, then we'll have to, you know, look for ways to adjust the dials a little bit. But, you know, in Boulder, Colorado, for example, where I live, the public hearings have both a constraint of time, as well as the number of people who can speak at a public hearing. I think it's like 15 right now. But a big part of that is because their meetings are running into the middle of the night, and so they have to find ways to trim down the duration, where we don't face that exact problem. We do face other problems of just the time it takes to consume something. But it is faster to read than it is to listen to someone speak something. So I think it's, we're not, I think the, the answer is not necessarily in. The jury's still out on this one, and it might be, like, some years of experimenting in this area to see what the right balance is.
Okay. Next question. Has anyone thought about asking for demographic data when you have to enter your name and your address?
I think it's something we certainly could do. We erred on the side of only asking online for what we asked for on person, in person. We get name and address, with the exception of email address. Online, we do get an email address, so we can respond to people. But, you know, there's certainly availability to, to ask for additional information. But right now, we just use Google Analytics to determine the, the demographics of the people participating.
Okay. I'm getting some questions about applicants. Do they get an opportunity to review public comments ahead of time, or speak to any of the comments?
Yeah, so everybody has the same access to the public. The, the public comments are on the public site, so everybody has access to the comments that are coming in. And, yes, so we, there's been a lot of back and forth at the beginning of this process in terms of, if we want the information online to be the same as the information on, on the day of the hearing, how similar do the two presentations have to be, and how much can we differ at the end? And so where we've landed on that in Lakewood, and I think different cities could do it differently, is we do the same presentation in person that we did online. So, you know, the one you pre-recorded is the one that you do live. However, after that presentation, the applicant or the staff can respond to issues that have arisen in the two weeks that the case has been online. So we can say, you know, we heard these issues come up, here is our response to them. And to the extent that we don't do that, the, the council members who have read the same comments, they, they ask, you know, what's your response to this issue?
Okay, thank you. People want to know how you were able to capture the age data if you didn't ask for their age.
Yeah, that just comes from Google Analytics.
That's what I was thinking. Okay, perfect, thank you. Okay, next question. What, what is the largest number of comments that have been received on a single case?
Maybe, maybe 20 or two dozen. I mean, we haven't had any 100 comment cases yet. So that, that's something we've talked about, is if, you know, we get these big, huge cases, how are we going to parse information on the data? But we haven't had any monster cases yet.
That was also another question that was coming through. For communities that might have more than 150,000 residents and who might have a lot of folks that like to comment about a particular topic, is what is the threshold for what the staff and commissioners can handle, and what happens if they get overloaded? I don't know, Jason, do you have any experience with that?
Well, we don't really know the threshold yet, right? Because we haven't... Can you hear me?
Yep, you're there.
So, yeah, we haven't hit that threshold, so we don't really have a, a clear sense of where that is. But there's a lot of toolsets that we can configure that would allow different ways to consume the content, both from, like, how you actually just go through that number of comments, where we can, you know, change how we display them. So show ones you've read, show ones you haven't, show less per page, and/or, you know, the things I mentioned before, such as sentiment analysis, to provide basically aids to the consumption of that. But these, the, reviewing a massive volume of comments is a problem that's been solved in other industries and other applications. So there's a lot of different tools and approaches for that type of thing. And, yeah, we'll see when we, when we hit that. I think that's the, you know, that's, this is the challenge, right? Like, if we want to increase engagement, increase participation, make it easier for people, then the hope is that they do participate. And at a certain point, is that going to become overwhelming and cost more collectively? Or collectively, will there be a savings in general? And we believe that, like, technology will bring the latter, but there's, I'm sure there's going to be speed bumps along the way.
So I guess, speaking of, of speed bumps, the folks that might have originally showed up to the public meeting, who might now just say, "Well, I'm just going to put my comment online and not show up." Is there, is there a point where this online platform might not be as much of a positive because folks are not engaging physically face-to-face anymore, if that makes sense?
Well, the thing, I mean, the thing is, people aren't engaging physically face-to-face now. That, that's why we did this, is because participation is down, and the participation we get is so limited demographically. So this is solving that problem, I think, more than creating it.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, next question. Did this variation of, of public input require changes to the statutes?
None whatsoever.
Okay. Oh, this is an interesting question. So did staff give any pushback about having to pre-record their presentations and then present them again live at the meeting? And, or did the pre-recorded video just get played at the meeting in a video format, if that's, if that was even an option?
Right. We actually experimented with that a couple times at the beginning. You know, then we pre-recorded, and then we just played it. It was, it was kind of awkward to just play the video with the person sitting right there. So, so we went back to, we do a vote, that, you know, the staff pre-records, and then they do it live. Planning staff hasn't had any issue or any complaint with that. With the council, you know, where we have different departments coming in, there are departments that aren't regulars in front of council, that come in once or twice a year for a specific thing. So occasionally, there's some pushback against pre-recording, or, "Oh, I don't have the information two weeks ahead of time." There's been a little bit of that from, from other departments, but it certainly hasn't been a problem on our end.
I think it's a good question. There's, there's also a consideration that we talked about a lot in the beginning, which was, you know, is it going to be too hard to do this, or is there going to be pushback? And the other way to run this software and potentially explore doing these kind of online companions to public hearings is to shift the vote, at which point the vote is made. So you could record the presentation that's being given at the live public hearing, put that on the site as a recorded video with all the other materials, and then instead of having the vote occur at the conclusion of the in-person public hearing, extend that window two weeks out. So then people have two weeks to see the video at their comments and questions. And I think the, there's other challenges with that that Travis could speak to, but from a technical point of view, like, that's another way you could approach it, if you wanted to mitigate having to create the video.
Okay, thank you. Oh, this is, okay, this is interesting. Are people, and if not, is there an option to require people to click that they've watched or read the material before commenting? You know how sometimes, if you're doing something online, you have to scroll down and read the disclaimer and click "Yes, I agree" before it takes you to the next screen? Is that a thing? Should it be a thing? Can it be a thing?
I assume Jason can talk to whether it can.
I mean, yeah, it certainly could be.
Yeah, we, so the question was whether we would require the public to watch the videos and read the information before they can comment?
Yeah, correct.
So, yeah, I think technically it's possible. The answer is, we don't require that for them to come and speak, right? We don't require them to sign an affidavit that they know anything about the issue before they speak. So that's how we treat them online as well.
Okay. Specifically regarding council, do you only use this for public hearings, or can the public comment on any of their agenda items?
Great question. Right now, we just do it for voting items at the public hearing, the items that they're going to actually take action on. We haven't yet done it for study sessions, or for, like, you know, resolutions and things that they're not taking action on, but it's certainly possible. And, and we may, I mean, I doubt we'll contract it, we may expand it over time.
Okay. This may be, it may be too soon to tell, really, but do you think that the changed demographics and the new route to comment has led to a shift in the decisions and the outcomes of cases?
Hmm, interesting question.
I thought so, too.
Yeah. I, I don't know that I'm prepared to opine on that yet. I haven't really thought that through. I mean, I, I think the council is happy with the quality of comments they're getting. I can't say definitively whether it's changed the course on any particular case.
Okay. When Travis did this new form of online participation start?
Well, let's see. We ran some test cases as early as, early 2017. I think we officially started in August with full use on the planning commission. The planning commission ran it for about a year, and then we started the city council more recently, just a few months ago.
Okay, thank you. So can someone still comment by email or letter? And if so, are those, I don't know, reformatted or posted online into the same system so that all of the comments outside of those who physically attend the hearing are organized together? How does that, how does that look?
Yeah, that hasn't really been an issue. When we get people that call and say, "How can I comment?", we, we direct them to the site. You know, in the past, we'd, we'd have to say, if people call and say, "I can't make it to the meeting," we'd say, "Well, you can send us an email, or you can send us a letter." Now we just direct them to the site. And so we, it hasn't really been an issue. I think maybe once or twice, we have gotten some written comments that we do the same thing. We, we, you know, we printed it out and given it to the, to the commissioners as really the only printed material they get, because we haven't taken the further step of, you know, entering people's information for them on the site. But maybe that's the future, I don't know. It just, it hasn't been an issue.
Yeah, and just to sort of jump into, I think the, a lot of the questions are things for nuances of how this software has been implemented at the city of Lakewood. But it's a flexible software platform, and so, you know, a lot of the things that are being asked are simple configurations that, that we could adjust based on the needs. So what we did with Lakewood and Travis was spend time figuring out what's the best implementation based on their process that meets their needs, which would be the same thing we do when we look at other cities.
Okay, I'm going to squeeze in one more question, because a couple people have asked about this, and we talked a little bit about, we had an ex parte communication discussion a little bit. But if you could review one more time, the, the IM, like, the internal messaging system that's available, are those messages that go back and forth, are they disclosed at the public hearing? Or how, how are those comments posted for the public to see if they are posted?
So we...
The internal messaging system between the citizens and staffer applicant, or between the decision makers and staffer applicant, is not made public. It's all private.
We really tried to replicate the way things worked prior to this system. So prior to this system, if a citizen had a question, they would call or email, and we would respond by calling or emailing and have a conversation with them. It works the same way on the site if the citizen asks a question. For council, for counselors or commissioners, if they asked a question in the previous iteration, you know, they'd send an email. We, we would respond, but we'd try to respond in a way that would give all of the commissioners the same information. But that was never something we'd make public. If the, if the commissioners want additional information, that's for their decision-making process, and their question has never really been an issue of public concern.
Okay, thank you. I think we're going to close up shop. So Travis and Jason, thank you for joining us today. We had well over 500 folks on the line and well over 100 questions. So this is clearly a hot topic, and hopefully we'll be able to keep this conversation going. And thanks to APA Colorado and Sheila, if you're somewhere in the outer webs, thank you for coordinating this. And hey, everyone have a great weekend, and we will talk next time. Thanks again Travis and Jason.